Yes. And I didn't print it.
So. I have one here, you want it?
Uh. Uh, can I photocopy it?
That's what I was just gonna say. It's got my notes on it.
I don't care.
It helps.
Thank you. So, are you recording?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Did everybody hear me? Okay. So, I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting of the city of New Meadows, Monday, February eighth at six thirty-two P M. And we'll have a real call.
So Darla Weber.
Yes.
Uh, Shaila Riker.
Yes.
Really good.
Yes.
And Darby Edwards.
Yes.
Beth Perna is absent. We also have in the room Angie Mehdi, uh, myself, Jordan Zweigart, and, uh, Richard Stubbs.
Okay, so you would like to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States.
Of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you all for being here, and I hope everybody is staying upright in the I C, I C, I C-ness. Um, so, a couple things. First of all, and I hope you read my major report, I would like a little bit of input if anybody has any on possible ways that we can expand our job search. So currently, Mac, um, correct me if I'm wrong, we have put a notice at the Department of Labor. We have it on Facebook.
Star News and The Record.
Star News and The Record. So, to date, we have had two applicants, one which was not gonna be able to be interviewed, didn't pass initial, um, review, and one that we will be interviewing this week. But can I get some ideas on possible other ways that we could reach out and get more applicants, please? Maybe? What do you think, Shailo? You have any ideas?
Well, I mean, we could branch out to, do we have a LinkedIn presence?
Um, not much of one, if we do at all. I can look.
So maybe getting it out there on LinkedIn, because LinkedIn associates professionals with what they are looking for in a job and what their qualifications are rather than their location. And, well, I'm not saying someone is likely to relocate for this position. It might widen our scope. Um, trying to think of anything good word of mouth, maybe, that would inspire people, but nothing to remind me of that yet either.
Okay. Darby, any ideas?
Um, excuse. I'm critical of Facebook, but since I've, because I've run a side business working on SaaS and whatnot, since I've put my ad on Facebook, um, it's blown up. So I don't know if we could place an individual ad, something outside of the city, but just place an individual ad on the Facebook. Um, I'm getting a lot of attention that way, so I don't know if that would work. Just an idea.
Okay.
All right. Um, I think we might be reaching, wanting to reach a little bit of a different demographic also, other than just Facebook. I don't know. Darla, what do you think?
Well, I agree with Shailo's recommendation about LinkedIn. That is a good source, and so I think we need to utilize that. I don't, I can't really think of, you know, because we've, we've got, um, stuff out there in the other places. So I, I, I don't, I can't think of anyplace else, really, Julie.
Do, would it be inappropriate to kind of throw it out there to other cities or regions?
So, we can, if I, and I, I had to look back and see if I did, but I think I put it on the Association of Idaho Cities website, and the, I don't have a real water, but I, I will double check that.
Yeah. I was just thinking a trade-specific, you know, um, places. I wondered about putting it on the Meadow Creek newsletter.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Angie, why don't you see who, I think it's Pam McGary, see what it would take to do that. So if you think of anything, please reach out to Mac or Angie and see if we can get a little bit more interest in this. We had a few people ask, but no, other than these two, no real applications. So I'd like to have a, a good showing, if at all possible, so.
Um, I know that, uh, Idaho Division of Labor is doing a drive-up job fair in Napa or Caldwell later this week.
Oh, wow.
So, maybe we can find somebody there that can hand out some job description and applications.
Yeah, that might be good. Okay, well, thank you for your input. And like I said, if you think of anything, especially the, the kind of local, regional, you know, there's so many people moving into the area. I just wonder if there's somebody who might be interested. So, um, on the broadband, it's since I wrote this last week, there's more things happening. So I'm meeting with, um, I have a meeting on Wednesday with Andrew and another gentleman to talk about, initially talk about talking to Zipley Fiber. So Zipley received a huge grant, huge amount of money from the federal government, and they're supposed to be using that to get their services expanded. Um, the problem is that they already have a lot of that in the ground, but because it's not real, um, cost, that it doesn't really make them a lot of money, because we don't have a huge population base. They've been dragging their feet. So I'm going to be meeting with them to request that they maybe work with the city. I'm not gonna promise them anything, because I don't, I don't think that we should partner up with them alone, but maybe we could talk to them. And I actually have reached out to the Highlands above Meadow Creek and some other places locally, where people actually are going back to Boise and working from their homes, who would stay here and work from their homes, but they can't, because they don't have a good enough service. So I'm gonna try to kind of push this thing outside the city limits a little bit, so that we have more population that we're talking about. And I think there's, um, there's money that's come down the pipe through the state, and ninety percent of it is for residential, uh, build-out. In other words, it's for residential, um, putting the infrastructure in, so that people residentially can get it. There's only ten percent of it that's gonna go towards, uh, assessment, needs assessment planning. So we are the only ones in this region, the Western Terre Mountains region, that really would benefit from that money. And so Andrew is working with me to see if we can't get some of that money and get broadband into this area in a, in a very big way. So, um, I just wanted to let you know that that keeps evolving almost every day. So it's a good thing. Anyway, I will present the job description for the animal control position at the next meeting. Um, tax season starts this week, so it's really interesting. Um, and then I do have some more, uh, training that I'm scheduling probably for March, and in regard to safety in the workplace and community. And, um, I'll let everybody know about that. And I really would like to reach out to the community and see if maybe even we can get some employ, employers that would have their, uh, individuals that are employed by them to come to this. So, alrighty, that's my report. And then we had staff reports. Angie had given her report. The report from Jessie, which I don't see her on here. Um, was not, was an old report, and she sent it instead of the current one. I talked to her today. It sounds like in the evening she has a little bit of trouble getting on these meetings because of her kids. So we'll work and see if we can't figure out a way for her to maybe be at the very beginning of the meeting, take care of her staff report even before mine, so then she can take care of her children and get that done. I do know a couple things. First of all, we were hit again with, um, the illegal dumping. And so I actually had a staff meeting this morning, and Doug was there. He has reached back out to the investigator that we had talked to before, and I asked him to call the county. This is a big deal to me, and I'm gonna make it a big deal. So we do have to report this to D Q, and we're gonna do everything that we need to do, but we're gonna, we're going to start making noise about this in whatever way we need to, in order for us to get some help. So, once I hear back from the county and what he hears from the in, uh, investigator, I'm figuring to go to the governor, um, to reach out to the Idaho State Police and do whatever I can to try to get a little bit of momentum for people to know that we've got something going on and find the right people to help us. So this is getting meticulous. It's just, it's, uh, this is going to cause us long-term problems, um, with our sewer system. And it, we may not see it today, but we'll see it ten years from now, or five. So, anyway, and, and Dick, I'm gonna be reaching out to you to make sure that I don't step outside the line in my zeal to get somebody to listen to us. So I'll probably give you a call tomorrow. So, um, the other thing is that Jessie has been doing some training. I know that she was the, what week that we got all the snow, she was training in the middle of, in between snowstorms, and really encouraging her to do that. Um, and she's doing a great job, but I do think that the staff reports is something that I'll make a priority for her. Um, I talked to Dick, to Dove today when I, so I'm, and asked him if he would keep an eye out for somebody that might be good for the city. So he said he would. Tomorrow I'll be going to the EMS, uh, board meeting and talking to them about several things. First of all, how they can maybe help us to get all of the, uh, places in town, all the addresses with their number, so that it can be seen for emergency services. And I think they can assist us with that. And also, I'm gonna ask for their help with keeping fire hydrants open. And we're gonna come up with a way that together as a team, we can work on that. The third thing I'm gonna talk to them about is a plan, an emergency transportation plan, when they close the roads, because it is a mess. All the people back up into town, and we don't know what's going on. So probably it will end up being a conversation we have to have with I T D two, but the city and EMS needs to have a plan, so we don't have people double parked on the highway. So, anyway, that's kind of what's going on in my world. And I will get Jessie to present something on the next meeting, since she missed this one. Anybody have any questions for Mac or Angie? We're here. Mac is working on moving his office to the front. He's working diligently. Darby, you have a question?
I'm, I'm curious about snow removal. Um, I know that we plowed the other day, and I guess just the budget. Or how, how are we sitting with regards to the budget on snow removal? I know that we plowed the other day, and we definitely did not have the six inches on the side streets that.
So the reason that she plowed the other day, because I asked her the same thing, was because it was due to get cold, and we had all the rutting. So it got warm, and then rained, and then cold, and people will complain if they pop tire.
Um, no.
I, I'll have to look.
I understand. I understand that, but numbers-wise, how are we looking? Do we need, you know, I, I, I understand that we need to provide a service to the public, um, but how are we sitting budget-wise with regards to snow removal?
So I have to wait until the next meeting to kind of give that information to you.
Okay.
Okay. Because that's when the payroll reports for the other week, or last week, will go into, well, and you won't even know until the second we can march on that, but I can get an estimate.
All right.
And I have asked her to clean up downtown before it froze, because we had a sloppy mess down there. So, um, and she has had to bring gravel in a couple places, over on Miller, over on Taylor, and in front of the post office. It's just a brutal year. The, the way that it gets warm, and then it gets cold, and it gets warm, then it gets cold, it is brutal. And the streets are, you know, but, but she's doing a great job. And I was great with her doing that run that she did, because it did level things out, whereas we would have had caverns going down the roads. Any other questions for anyone? Okay. All right. Um, so let's talk about the draft, Mark Parks' master plan document. Um, everybody got to see that? So this is a work in progress, correct, Darby?
Yes.
Okay. Um, my one comment and request is that committee purpose statement has some nice things lined out, but I feel like it would be very beneficial to have a mission statement, a sentence that is specific to Parks and Rec. All of those things listed there have nothing to do with Parks and Rec. So, as, like, kind of like the city has a mission statement that says, what is the Parks and Rec gonna do? And so you can bring in those purposes that are listed there, but it needs to be specific. That, that actually could apply to all kinds of different committees, but it needs to be specific to Parks and Rec. So does that make sense, Darby?
I think I understand what you're saying.
Just so if somebody says, what, what is your Parks and Rec committee about? You could say, well, this is what we're, this is our vision. This is what we envision. And it can include the things that are there, but really, part, part of it too is to find and continue to find Parks and Rec opportunities in our community and area. So that needs to be in there somewhere. So, and I know the rest is, is kind of, you know, the history, a lot of that is in progress, but I just wanted to look at your initial, so that we, those are, those initial purposes, those are gonna affect the whole document. So I just wanted the city council to kind of look at those and see if there's any direction you see that's not kind of being looked at, at this point, that we need to give a little direction, so that we don't have them do the whole document, and then come back and go, well, wait a minute, you know, we started here. Why didn't, why didn't you guys tell us we were kind of not going the right direction, which I don't, I think they're going the right direction. I just would like to see a little bit more Parks language. Does that make sense, Parks and Rec language? Anybody have any comments, Darla? Okay, Shailo?
I agree. I would like to see, rather than just bullet statements that are really, really vague, arguably not even complete sentences, like a full, here's who we are, here's what we have set out to do, and then it can guide everything else they do. If there's a direct, basically thesis statement for how they're going to conduct business.
Exactly. Perfect. Okay. And Darby, if you need any help with that, let me know. If you wanna, you know, chat about that. I just think it'll, it'll direct this better. I think it'll help you guys.
Hey, and knowing what you're saying is fine, you know, um, and I appreciate the input. We'll, we'll, we'll try to do better. Yeah, we'll get that together.
I don't think you've been not doing well. I just think it's something that will help the process. So I just, I think you're doing.
Okay.
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 Alrighty, thank you. And I, I think a periodic review as you guys move forward, not every month, and not even every three months, but to kind of review that. When you do get that mission statement done, it'd be great to, you know, send it over to us and let us review it. We'd love to do that, so.
Okay.
Okay, T-Tech meeting update. I'm working with Greg and trying to find a date for all these volunteers that are going to be on the T-Tech this month. And we have a week that we kind of have set aside. So I'm in the process of nailing down a date for our first meeting. There should only be two to three meetings, an hour and an hour and a half each. This will be the first one, and that's the update. Probably by the next meeting, I will either tell you we had a meeting, or this is what our meeting is going to be. Darby, you were on that. The rest of the city council is not. It is not a city council meeting, so nobody has to worry about being there except you, Darby. And so I will be getting with you to make sure that we can get schedules.
Okay.
All right. So we have Jordan here, and he, uh, everyone should have had in your packet, the audit. Um, I didn't print it, but I'm gonna pull it up on my screen. Jordan, why don't you give us the presentation that you have prepared?
All right, Mac, could I share my screen that way and just put the audit up there?
Yes, let me get you to do that.
Okay, so you're the host now.
Okay. All right, can everyone see that, the independent auditors report there?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, so, like I said, I'm Jordan Zweigart from Zweigart John Associates, and we did the audit, uh, for the year, and it's September thirtieth, twenty twenty. So I'm gonna briefly go over the audit report, just touch on a few things. So if you have questions, as I'm going through, please stop me. I'm more than happy to go into more detail. Um, so this is the, our report at the very front here. What this says, first off, is that these are your financial statements. This is everything Max put together, all of the records he kept throughout the year. We looked at it. We looked at the supporting document, how things were done. Um, and in our opinion, I'm here, we feel that everything was materially correct. So what that really means for you as a council is throughout the year, as you're getting those financial reports, you can rely on those. Those were accurately showing what was going on. From here, I'm gonna jump to page nine on the PDF, number page six. Uh, this is the balance sheet as of September thirtieth. Um, so you see the general fund ended with about eighty-five thousand dollars in cash. Had a little bit of back property taxes, about eight thousand of back property taxes still owed. Um, a few other receivables. Uh, this due from other governments of ten thousand, that's sales tax revenue from the state that came in October, that was for September, and then prepaid insurance. Um, that's just the insurance period, it's different than the fiscal year, um, causes that difference there. I'm a little bit of accounts payable, about thirty-two hundred, and that's just timing of when invoices come in. And so overall, ended the year in a pretty good position. And the other smaller funds, and we'll look at them in detail later, um, had about sixty-five hundred cash in them at the end of the year. Any questions on that? From there, uh, this is the income statement for the year. Uh, so you see the general fund brought in two-hundred-ninety-one thousand, uh, spent two-fifty-five, and was able to increase the reserve by about thirty-six thousand for the year. Um, the others, funds brought about six thousand, spent twenty-five dollars, um, putting that sixty-five hundred dollars in reserves there. Any questions on that?
So Jared, so just, um, for a point of understanding, the general fund is only money that's received from property taxes, uh, sales tax. It is not anything that is received from utilities, correct?
Correct. So, um, great segue into what we'll look at next. So this here is the water sewer and industrial park. So those are segregated out, because those funds are used specifically for those. So the general funds, kind of, all of the tax, everything else that's not water sewer and industrial park that comes in. Any other questions on that income statement before I jump over here? Right. So this is the balance sheet, uh, for those. So you see, at the end of the year, the water fund ended with, uh, two-hundred-sixty-three thousand in cash. Your sewer had a hundred and ten thousand, and your industrial park had a hundred fifteen thousand. Um, had a little bit of receivables. This is just at the end of the year, this build in October for the prior month, about twenty-seven thousand in water and sewer, and about two thousand in industrial park. And again, water and sewer had that three-thousand-eight-hundred of that, and prepaid insurance, which is just the timing. Uh, your water and sewer fund do have cash that's restricted. Um, water has twenty-eight thousand and thirty-five thousand in sewer. That's the reserve that's required to be set aside per the bond covenants. Uh, so that's why that's kind of segregated out there. I'm down on the liability side, again, a little bit of payables, about twelve thousand in total between all three. Um, accrued interest, that's just interest on the bond, um, that will, that's in the next payment. Um, six thousand dollars of customer deposits that were being held. Um, compensated absences, twenty thousand, that's vacation time, uh, that staff has earned, but hasn't taken yet. So if all the staff had left at the end of the year, uh, in the water and sewer fund, twenty thousand would have been paid out. And then you see just under fifty thousand is what will be paid in principal and fiscal twenty-one, uh, leaving eight-hundred-twenty-three thousand dollar on the, those two bonds there. Any questions on the balance sheet?
So, I just want to make a note, because we are paying, we had an employee that left, and we are now paying their, um, accrued vacation slash paytime, uh, paid time off, BTO. Um, that compensated absences should go down, correct?
Exactly. So yeah, that would go down, um, that'd reflect on the next audit. So yeah, if that's paid out, that goes down.
All right.
And Jared, you were saying that the water has a three-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-dollar loan on it yet? And then a half a million on sewer, is that correct?
Uh, that's after this year's payments of about twenty-five each. Yep.
So that was the balance going into the new fiscal year?
Yep, this was the balance at September thirtieth. Uh, so this twenty-four-nine and this twenty-five, that's estimate principal, not interest, but principal portion that would be paid. Um, and then the three-twenty-four and the just under five hundred, after fiscal twenty-one is what would be left on those two.
So.
And we'll look at it later, kind of break out what those payments look like going forward.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions? From there, I'm gonna jump over here to the income statement, um, for the water sewer and industrial park. Uh, so you see, water brought about two-hundred-thousand, uh, from operations, um, spent about a hundred forty-four thousand, or had positive sixty-three thousand dollar, um, earned about two dozen of interest, paid out about two thousand of interest, paid out about twenty-seven hundred of interest, and then did receive, uh, four-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand in grant money for the year. So here, it shows it increased the reserve by five-hundred-thousand, but we'll look at that, um, in a little bit. Uh, the sewer fund brought in just over two-hundred-thousand, spent one-seventy-eight, again, was able to increase its reserve, um, from operations about thirty-five, and then brought in sixteen-hundred of interest, paid out nineteen thousand, and then got ninety-three thousand worth of grants for the year. And then industrial park brought in twenty-one, spent thirty-five thousand for the year. Um, so bottom line there, had a decrease of about twelve thousand dollars. I'm gonna go from there to this next, um, statement of cash flow. So that last one is on accrual accounting basis, where this is cash that actually left. So you can see the water fund cash actually increased by forty-six thousand five hundred for the year. Your sewer fund cash actually decreased by twenty thousand, and your industrial park cash increased by about fifteen hundred. Uh, one of the big reasons for the, especially in water and sewer, the big difference, this personal purchase of capital assets, the water park, four-hundred-eighty-three thousand was spent on capital assets. So you had all of that grant revenue, um, but that expense is here, uh, not on that previous one, and then seventy-three thousand in the sewer fund. So that's what's causing a lot of that big difference there.
So can I ask a question? If the hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand from debt proceeds on the water, then is that, is that money that's gonna have to be paid back?
Yes. So let me, I'm gonna just, real quick, um, scroll down here so we can look at. Here we go. So this is kind of a summary here, um, for the year. So, you can see here, the D E Q loan, um, there, started the year at a hundred fifty-six thousand on it, increased to a hundred sixty-seven thousand to three-hundred-twenty-four. Um, so, most D E Q, the way it works is you use the loan portion first, and then the grant. So that four-hundred-some was the grant portion for the year. This one sixty-seven was the amount of it that was added on to the loan.
Okay, but on that other, so if you had part of the debt proceeds as part of what you say that we made, the question that I'm having is, if that's the case, then we really didn't, if we're gonna have to pay that back eventually, we just made that on paper this year, but that hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, if you take that away from what it looks like our increase was, we didn't increase.
Okay, I understand your question, sorry. So here, where we see a five-hundred-thousand change in that position, that debt proceeds is not included in that at all. Um, but that grant revenue is what's causing it. What this report, the statement of cash flows is showing, is simply cash in the bank. What, how did that change?
I.
You're correct, that one sixty- So you're correct, that 167 will will be paid back because that's sitting on your balance sheet is in that long term debt section.
And I just point that out because when we're talking about budget, when we start moving into budget, we look at how much we received and how much we spent over and above and regardless of the grant projects and the loan projects we have going on. So from what this looks like, how how does that, how did we do?
So if we look up here in this top section, cash flow from operating activities. This is simply what cash did you get for for water sewer and park? And what did you spend for employees and equip and you know, everything else? So you see the water fund there ran a deficit of 38,000. The sewer fund pretty much broke even, positive 360 and industrial park 400. So this is from operations what happened. And then you come down here and this is where the capital outlay and stuff comes in. So if you're looking just operations, those are, that's the number to look at up there.
That's what we needed to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? From there, I'm going to jump through the foot, the footnotes. We'll kind of hit these fast here. This first footnote is just kind of a boilerplate footnote of your accounting policies. Here, this just shows where the cash was sitting at the end of the year. I mean, this external investment pool, that's the state LJP. You see, you had about $423,000 sitting there. And then you have your money market fund that had about 165,000. And then down here, this just splits up governmental activities. That's just the general fund. Your business type activities, that's the water sewer and industrial park fund. And this negative cash here, that's just because it's all in one checking account. That's just how the accounting software does it, but it had money in the investment to cover that. So that kind of looks funny, but it's just timing of when money's pulled out of the investment. Any questions on that? There. All this here. So here we'll look at this compensated absences. So this just shows the role for the year. So we looked at that 20,000 for the waters and sewer. The government fund, that was at about just under 14,000. So total, you're about $34,000 at December 30th of that accrued vacation that was still owed out. Below this, this is just the copier lease. You have two more years on the lease you currently have. And this just shows the minimum payments on that lease for the next two years. And we kind of looked here at this debt. So you can see here, you started the year in total with 773,000 owed. The 167 was received, 86, 89,000 was paid off. So 872,000 is 873,000 is the total that debt outstanding. And so down here, you can see what the annual payments will be through 2060 when they would be paid off.
Go back.
Yes.
2026 through 2030?
So what we break it out, the next five years, we break out individually. And then after that, it's in lumps of five years.
Thank you.
Just to condense it.
Thank you.
If you notice there in 2026 and then also later this year, we, this fiscal year, we're dropping off $26,733 on the water bond and 32,000 and change on the sewer.
Yeah.
But we'll be increasing those two after this year too.
Any questions on the the debt there? From there, we'll just look at this. We kind of looked at earlier. This is for your general fund, what was budgeted versus what actually happened for the year. So you can see you budgeted to bring in 408,000, actually brought in 291 or about 117 less than was budgeted. Most of that being grants that were originally budgeted. I mean, you budgeted spend the full 408, only spent 255 or 153 less than was planned. So you didn't get those funds and thankfully you didn't spend them. And so overall, again, we're able to increase that reserve by $36,000. I'm just going to point out these pages. This page here just breaks out all of the revenue into more detail that came into the general fund. Again, like we said earlier, the vast majority of it being the property taxes and then funds from the state of Idaho, sells tax liquor and highway user. And then page 37 and 38 here, this just breaks out again in more detail of all of the expenses that are going through the general fund. Breaks it up by department and then breaks those up into a little bit more detail. Those two reports, if you're going to go back and kind of look at one, those are good ones to show the breakdown. Here, at the beginning, we saw a total other governmental funds. This just shows the detail that 5,000 that's sitting in the grant fund and 1,500 that's sitting in your utility assistance program at September 30th.
So this is the medical roundup?
And the Weezer River Trail.
The Weezer River Trail is in there as well.
Yes. So they're they're not really their own funds. So they lumped them on the audit, they lumped them into the general fund.
Oh, okay.
So they'll still show up on our things separately, but.
Okay.
Yeah, some of that's just accounting standards for things like that. They're, they just group all together. So last here at the end, in the state of Idaho, all government entities, in addition to just looking at the financials, we also look at internal controls and compliance. And we didn't have any issues there. We saw evidence where multiple sets of eyes were looking at invoices and bank statements. I did not see any compliance issues for the year. So overall, good clean audit report. Any questions for me? I know that's a whirlwind information there.
I have a question, sir.
Yes.
So you're the expert and I am not. I mean, I know Julie's good with numbers. Mac is also very good with numbers. How do you think? All in all, I mean, just shoot it to to us straight, you know, um. Are there areas for improvement? All in all, how are we looking? I guess that would be my question.
So all in all, the general fund, everything looks good. The one area of concern that I would have is your water fund. Like we saw, it ran an operating cash loss of 38,000. Unfortunately, that's not very, that's not uncommon for cities your size. It's very hard. Water and sewer, where you have a lot of the same infrastructure that a bigger city has to have, you have to have it as well. But you don't have the population to spread that expense over, which makes water and sewer more expensive there. So that's the one thing I would just, I would keep an eye on. Your sewer fund was pretty good, about broke even. But your water fund there did run that loss. So it's fine this year, but that's not sustainable if you were to do that every year. So that would be something to watch is that water fund to make sure that, you know, the amount that you are collecting from user fees is covering that cost to run it. Other than that, the general fund looked fine. There were no concerns there and everything else looked good.
So I have a question about interest. I see you, we pay about 11,000, is that right?
Interest paid was about 22,000.
22, okay. Based on the amount of financing that we have, are we, are we within a good parameter there or should we be?
You are. If you look here, this shows what interest rate you're paying. Your most expensive. And it's the one that's ending this year is at 5.75. Then you have another, your other big ones at 5.125, still not very high. Everything else is 2% and under. I don't know that, you know, your city is why you're getting that, but I don't know that you could get that much anywhere else for any less.
Okay. Well, and we also have the land lease in there too. So that was, that that's 21,000 right there out of that 30 some odd.
Yeah.
So then the other thing is with that 26,000 dropping off, I mean, it might pencil out this next year.
Yeah. So next year, tentatively, your interest would drop from the 22,000 to about 19, 19, 8. So you can see kind of here what the interest portion is going to be doing. So it is going down. So it's it's dropping, you know, 2,000 from last year and then another 2,000 next year with that one dropping off.
Yeah.
So Jared, does it do us any good to turn around and prepay some of that principal? Like on the sewer bond that's due in 2029 or due to end in 2029?
I I mean, it could, it will potentially save you some interest. I don't know that, you know, that's kind of a decision you have to make of, is it worth not having that capital on hand if something happens? To save, you know, the interest, especially on these where it's at 2%. So it would save some, but it's not going to save, especially as you get down here to these ones, it's not going to be saving a very significant amount unless you're paying pretty large chunks of it.
Okay. I was just thinking on the sewer, the 9203. But.
Yeah, the 9203, yeah, if you were going to prepay, that one would save you more. So that one probably, of all of them, that one would be the best bang for your buck to prepay. Because that, you know, that was a good chunk of it is from that one.
We'd have to have better cash flow.
Yeah.
We did, yes, definitely, but. Okay, anybody else have any questions for Jordan?
So then you'll just want to make a motion to accept the audit report and that's all I have.
Okay, we have that down under action items, Jordan. So we'll do that when we get down to that portion of our agenda.
And Mac, I believe I just made you the presenter again.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jordan. Darla, are you still with us? I'm asking because we don't have a quorum if you're not.
I I'm here, Julie. I'm sorry. Yeah.
That's right. Just because we've only got barely enough, I just wanted to double check. No problem.
Yep, I'm here.
All right, Jesse, I see that you just got on. I can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
The report that you gave Angie was actually the one from December. So I just gave a little bit of an update on that you've been doing some training and what a great job you're doing with the snow removal that we did get hit again on illegal dumping. Do you have anything else? Maybe would you like to, why don't you give them a little update on discharging?
Yeah, I did actually must have saved it wrong, but so the discharging, we had Challenger come up and got all the sampling pumps and everything figured out. One of the lines is still frozen as far as the what tells us the chlorine residual, but I can do that by hand until it boughs out. So far, everything's working good. I did have to shovel lots of poop today. That was fun. I'm trying to remember what all I put in there. Devin's been doing great with snow plowing each time's getting. We're both getting faster each time. I'm getting the grater figured out pretty good, I think.
Okay, any problem areas that you're having that you need the council to know about?
I don't think so. I did put in there like when the wing fell off of the of the wing, their cutting edge fell off, like an impact gun really would be helpful. I had to borrow one from Devin.
And did like, can you give me a price on that, remember?
Yes, I actually did look them up and I will send that to you.
Okay, I'll put it on the 22nd and we'll get, we'll bring that up for approval. Okay, anybody have any questions for Jesse while she's here? Jesse, why don't you send that whatever the one that you had, why don't you send that over to Angie again? And we'll get it out to everybody so we can look at it. Okay?
Okay, yeah, well, yeah. And I've been doing a lot of trying to keep the pothose holes filled. I did dirt, use the grater. It didn't snow, but the ice roots were pretty bad. So I cut, took the grater and cut all those up a little.
You're doing great.
Thanks.
Great. Okay, thank you for calling in. I really appreciate it. So.
I've been on hold for like an hour.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We turned things around. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Okay, so public input, this is the time where the public is invited to speak on a night of not already on the agenda. I don't know that we have any, do we have any public?
It's no, the key lyrics or keeners are here for the.
Industrial park. Okay. All right. So let's talk a little bit about Virginia Street parking signage. I brought this up before and gave you a proposal where I thought was important to maybe put those in. Mac gave you his thoughts on it and some cost. And his, his thoughts were to put them on all of the areas. And the only reason that I I was just pointing out the areas that I know are an issue. The thing that has come up, and I don't know if we want to deal with it, how we want to deal with it. But we have a couple of areas where there are private drives or private parking areas that front onto the main street corridor. And we have issues with people parking in those. And so I don't know if we want to look at including signage there and that those places would be the Granite Mountain Parking Lot and the entrance into Mac's house, which is a private drive. It, if you don't mark those, people don't look. And so parking is an issue down there. And I, I don't know, we're going to be looking at the parking ordinance review. And we might want to just look at that instead of really making a decision on the placement of these parking notices. Because I do have some thoughts about maybe some ways that we might want to change the ordinance to get a handle on the parking downtown. If you all realize that currently we do not have the full use. All the buildings downtown are not fully being used. So let's say that the medical clinic was open five days a week, we would have a huge influx of parking issues. Right now, they're only one or two days a week. So we need to figure out a way to do some things so that parking doesn't continue to be an issue and make people leave our town because they don't have anywhere to park. So they can't go to our restaurants and our businesses. So is everybody good with looking at the parking ordinance before we really talk about or make some sort of decision on the Virginia Street parking? Yeah. Okay. So if you have that chapter two parking regulations and it's got the definitions, we went over all of these when we were redoing all of and reviewing all of the ordinances. Does anybody have any problem with the definitions, the way that they stand? Okay, so the the part that I think we really need to talk about is the restricted parking. So right now it's restricted. You cannot park on the portion of US Highway 95 from South End Road to the intersection of Highway 95 and Highway 55 between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM year round. Now Mac was saying he thought maybe we should change that to just be during, you say, snow removal?
Yeah.
My concern is that often, I mean, my concern is that do we really want people to spend the night on the side of the road downtown?
They do it anyway.
But I know they do it anyway. But if we put signs up and we talk to the sheriff's department and we say this is important to us, then they can cite people. But if we don't, I just, you know, when is snow removal? Is it only when there's snow on the ground? Maybe we say during the winter season. Because the the argument's going to be, I didn't know you were doing snow. Cause the, the argument's going to be, I didn't know you were doing snow removal today. I didn't think it needed it. So let's have a little discussion about that part of, let's talk about the two AM to six AM and get some input on what you guys think. Derby. Yes, Derby.
I do know that we have a lot of truckers that pass through. Yes, they just park and idle and sleep for the night, but they also run into the barbecue joint and buy some hamburgers. And so there's some stimulation of community development there. So I don't know, but at the same time, they don't need to be in the way, you know, I'm, what's ITD stance on this? I mean, because technically that's the highway, right? That's what we're, we're talking about, Virginia Street, correct?
Right. Our responsibility. Cause they're not parking on the highway. They're parking on the cities right of way there. So I don't, you know, I know that ITD does not want the parking on the road. I know that. And I know there's a period of time that they're not supposed to be left on the side of the road. Two AM to six AM, everything's done. There's nothing open from two AM to six AM in this town. There's not even a convenience store in this town from two to six. If, if we're going to just make it for snow removal season, I think it should just be when there's snow on the ground. I think that, that, because just to say when it's snow removal, that makes them have a decision of they think it should be snow removal or not. So, and my question is, do we want to consider looking at possibly working with someone to see if there's additional truck parking somewhere that's better suited than where we currently are having trucks parked? Maybe we need to talk to J I Morgan or someone, someone else and off, you know, and off the highway main corridor because we want to encourage people to stop, but if you have the streets lined with trucks, they're not going to. Shiloh, what do you think?
I'm not sure I have a concrete answer, but I think Max note to us brings about a really good point. What in the world do we do when the roads are closed? I, for example, got stuck in McCall the last time the roads were closed, so I couldn't even be part of it. But I know for truckers, we have an even bigger danger than just me and my little mom car trying to drive down the canyon. Ban access to somewhere safe to stop. Are they going to go on? And of course, that isn't our liability if they go on and get injured, but I mean, I would feel terrible. So what do we do? It is a minimal. Where do we give them a good space to stop? And I don't feel like I have the answer, but I think we do have to take it into account.
Right. I, I think, that's why I want to have the conversation tomorrow. I want to create a plan. And obviously in an emergency situation with the roads are closed, everything's going to be different. But I'd like to get a plan maybe with J I Morgan, with local, other local places and talk to ITD and say, if you let everybody go, then you have to give them directions. And say, yes, you can go on into New Meadows, but here's where you need to park. We, we gotta do something in those emergency situations. I'm concerned on our ordinance about, you know, and my thought was, actually, let me go on to Darla. Darla, what do you think about the two AM to six AM?
Hi Julie, and yes, I, the two AM to six AM. That's all good, but I mean, we need to, there, there's got to be another place for people to park, for the trucks especially. Because we know how many come through here. You know, I'm up at three AM to go to work. I still hear them going through. And, um, but we have lots of places, J I Morgan, yes, that's awesome. We've got a lot of other properties over there by Subway, over there by the, the other church. You know, I mean, there's just lots of area that we need to be able to, I don't know how, what we need to go through to make it happen, but we need to have alternate parking areas for these people. It's just gonna happen. Because they're gonna come through, they gotta stop. It's just like when the rock slide happened up there by Riggins. We had stuff backed up here for a long ways. So we have to figure out something.
Yeah, I agree. I totally agree with you. Derby.
So with that in mind, and I think Dartle makes a great point, we, we do need to make something happen. But so would we need to enter into an agreement from a city perspective with like J I Morgan? Are they going to keep an area plowed where trucks? Those are the questions that come to mind for me.
But I kind of wanted to hone in on the two AM to six AM and just get a consent. Whether you guys think that you want to continue to make that a no parking all the way down Virginia Street. If you want to keep that clear from, and it obviously doesn't stay clear, but here's the problem in snow season and it's happened already. There, he goes to sleep at eleven thirty, he doesn't wake up until seven and Jesse's come and tried to plow. And when he leaves, he leaves all of this mess that was underneath the crop and then it freezes. And it's just, it's a terrible mess and then it clogs up the drains because there's water coming off of it and ice coming off of it. So in this, I am pretty firm that I think we should keep it in the snow season. We have to have access. But I guess what I'm asking is, is it, right now it's year round. How many want it to be year round? I don't know that we do street sweeping or anything like that in the middle of the night.
No, we do that usually four or five in the morning when there's, when there's nobody parked on Main Street.
Right, and if we kept it year round, then at four o'clock in the morning, there shouldn't be anybody on the street. What, what is your consensus for the two AM to six AM? Do you want it to remain year round, Shiloh?
I think year round is more reasonable with trucker exemptions and figuring out where to put them aside. I don't think there is any other really legitimate reason to park from two AM to six AM on the street. We have affordable motels and hopefully maybe that will encourage people who want somewhere to stop for the night to maybe go to the motels instead of staying on the streets.
Okay, Derby, are you good with that?
I think, I think a sign that says during snow removal periods is a little vague. If we want to put October through March, I don't know, you know, I don't know, snow removal periods. If we put that on the, and I'm just looking at what was presented.
My question to you is, do you want two AM to six AM year round?
No.
Why?
Because if they're not in the way during snow removal, why can't they park and stay the night and do that thing?
Can I, can I, can I mention something here? Because between two AM and six AM is when people sleep that live downtown. And we're going to have quite a few more people eventually as this town grows live downtown, because that's where people want to live. I know I had to chase off people idling, you know, on all sides of my house in the last couple of years. So, and I know Susie Burnett has had to do the same thing. I'm sure Stan Hall as well.
Yeah, it's not just businesses.
It's not, yeah, it's not just.
I guess Derby, give me a reason that you would want people to pull over and stay from two AM to six AM on Main Street.
Well, it's like I said before, you know, and, and I mean, Maka, Mac added a lot of perspective to my perception. And that's what we need to do. That's why we're a council, you know, and you know, I, I.
But do you have a reason? I mean, because I would like to hear your input if you, if there is a valid reason that you feel it would be beneficial to let truckers sit there and idle for four hours.
Well, are they going to eat breakfast in town?
Maybe not.
Are they gonna buy some coffee?
We just don't know that.
Doesn't start until seven.
No, we don't.
And it's not till seven. And usually, you know, if they're sleeping, you know, we don't, we don't have any control over what time they get up. If they get up at five or six and start off again. I just think if you're going to come into town and get something to drink at six o'clock in the morning when Brown's opens, there's nothing open and you can't stay from two to six, you move on. I don't know that we're going to lose that much because there's nothing open.
Okay, then that's your perception, but I just. I would just like to voice my disagreement, you know, I mean, yeah, maybe they do pull into town at two o'clock. And they sit and idle somewhere. But then they go and buy breakfast at Brown's or the Granite and they get some coffee or I don't know. You know, I'm just trying to look at it through their eyes. I mean, these guys run long hours. They pull into some, they pull into someplace where they can get on a rest. They get on the road again. And if that's here, that's here. If we, if, if we has, if we have a designated area where we would like them to park, we can do that. But I mean, if, if we don't have snow on the ground, I mean, yeah, no, I don't want them in front of Mac's house. You know, I don't want them in front of Suzie's house, you know, um, I don't want them disturbing anybody. But at the same time, if we can get them to slow down and spend a little bit of money. I don't see anything wrong with that. But again, I'm not down there. I'm not at the forefront. So like I said, Mac adds, adds a little bit of credibility to the story.
So, um, when we when the Granite Mountains stopped being open seven days a week and opening earlier. The truckers realized that. And so it's not near as bad as it used to be. But they are required to stop for ten hours. So they've adjusted, many of them that come through here have adjusted. They'll, they'll stop in Grangeville or they'll stop in, in Weezer where there are truck stops, but we need a truck stop. That's, that's, that, that will turn around and solve everything right there. So you put your feelers out there?
Yeah, we do need a truck stop. We don't have anything open in those hours. So Darla, what do you, what are your thoughts? And we're specifically talking about being, having parking between two AM and six AM year round.
Between two AM and six AM year round, no, we should not be having it, no. And you know, again, like you just said, Julie, I mean, obviously we need a truck stop. And you, you know, I mean, everybody knows that. We've got massive things going through here. But again, that's part of building our community. But, uh, you know, they don't need to be sitting down by Mac's house idling. Anywhere else between those hours. That's right, because you don't just hear it down there, you hear it clear up here where I live, you know. So, you know, um, and the, and the truckers know, and yes, I, I'm, I'm well aware of their requirements and all that stuff as far as their driving time and their rest time and all that. But they also know with those requirements, if we have stipulations where they're going to need to make their stops for their sleep time to stay within their parameters by law. So, you know, we, we don't have to be an exception here. We've, no, that's, so that's my, that's my opinion.
It's a little bit like when you are in a business and you try to have different hours for different seasons.
Correct.
It's hard for people to keep up with it. And so the people that come through in the summer, it's like, oh, this is great. Then when they come in the winter, they don't even look at the sign, you know, because they parked there that summer. It's like, I park here all the time. So I think it's easier for people to track if it's just like, you know, in New Meadows, you can't park there from two AM to six AM. So they make other arrangements. So, um, yeah, and that is what our ordinance says. And so I don't see a reason to make any changes at this point, especially not now in the middle of winter. We're not going to make a difference. My question though, that I thought about is because I see this happening. I see people come and park and then they're there all day long. And so if there are people who want to come and eat, there, you know, might be three people who have been there for six hours. And so we don't have enough parking downtown for people to do that. So I'm wondering if we want to consider having a maximum parking on that area throughout the day so that we don't have. I mean, like if it's an employee, they can park in the back. They shouldn't be taking up that parking for the people who are coming through town and go, oh, wow, intersection barbecue, Granite Mountain Cafe. I think I'll duck in here and they can't because all the employees or people who park there and then get in with somebody else and drive up the hill to a call, happens all the time. Let's think about, about that.
I would hope that the employers would encourage their employees not to park on the street.
Well, I would too.
I don't know. Yeah, yeah.
What do you think, Shiloh? You have a very concerned look.
No, um, it sounds to me like it would be a bit of a beast to enforce. Are we going to call Adams? And I worry that people who have nothing better to do, who are located downtown may sit there and call Adams County every two hours. This person has been here for two hours and one minute, and I would hate to arm people for that. And while if we were a much bigger city, I think that that's reasonable for traffic flow. I worry that we would just be creating a burden for people that we really don't need to. Where we could just encourage people to make good choices. Employers, encourage your employees, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I don't think it says employees as much. I know where I'm at right now. I can't tell you how many times there's someone who comes and parks. People who come and park and take up all of the parking areas in front of my office and they're there all day. And there's nothing you can do because they're gone. They got in with somebody and went to McCall or they got in with somebody and went to Boise. And so that was the only reason. And now that I have vintage in my front, which really does rely upon walk-in traffic. I'm, I'm watching them become very frustrated with the fact that, you know, they have, there's nothing they can do. You know, even if it was that they got a ticket, you know, on their, on their window, if they were there for more than two or three hours, I don't know. I just, I just threw it out there because it is an issue. And Darlene brought it up the last, when she was here last time. That's one of the hardest things about having a business downtown. So, um, but I hear what you're saying and not wanting to encourage people to rat on each other. But because we also have residents there, that's the same thing you have a little bit is.
And you know, and, and there's, it's like our no skating on the sidewalks. It wouldn't be that hard to turn around and put a sign on each one of those things. And it's just an education thing that the customer, you know, the businesses maybe turn around and put it on their menu for a little bit. Hey, you know, your parking spot is only good for two, two hours. You know, please be considerate so we can get another seat in here or whatever.
And I know, I know that Shannon tries to get people who are gonna hang out there. To go park in the back or whatever. Darla, what do you think about that?
Well, you know, there's lots of cities that have like a thirty minute parking limit. And so, you know, why should we be any different? Because obviously parking is, we don't have enough. We all know that. It's been an issue for years. And so, you know, to have a sign that says, you know, again, we're talking about another dad gum sign, but a, you know, a thirty minute parking limit and then they're going to be ticketed and then what? But, um, you know, I mean, we have to start imposing these things to help our businesses downtown.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to encourage people to come and spend their money here and I want businesses to come here. But I feel like the parking is a bit of an issue.
Yes, yes.
Talking about, you know, you can't just say, oh, the only kind of businesses we want are, are ones where people you know, don't have to get out of their car and come in. I don't know. I mean, I don't know. I just, I don't, maybe that's not the answer. I'm not talking about putting in parking meters or anything like that. But I just wonder, and once again, Shiloh, like you said, I don't know that how much actual high level enforcement we would be calling for, but it would at least be a reminder for a few maybe that we could clean that up a little bit. I don't know, Derby, what, what's your take on that?
I, I, I agree with Darla's perspective. I don't think thirty minutes is reasonable. Cause if my family comes into town and we've got six of us sitting down at Shannon's place having, yeah, thirty minutes is not. So let's cut to the chase. Are you asking, should we put up signs restricting the number of hours? I mean, we're kind of getting off track. Are we still talking about the two to six? Or are we talking about general parking?
We're done talking about two to six. We all weighed in on two to six and other than you, everybody. We're done talking about two to six. We all weighed in on two to six and other than you, everybody agreed. That we kind of like to leave two to six the way it is right now, especially during. So we're, we walk away from that and now we're talking about a way to encourage. Use of the parking for downtown businesses and not for parking for other reasons.
You know, I, I think thirty minutes is very limiting.
Okay, well, maybe it's not thirty minutes, but we're just, I'm just saying, are you in favor of a time period? That we say you can only park for two hours or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Two hours is much more reasonable. You know, that gives you a chance to have dinner. Maybe walk around town, check out the thrift store or something else. I think.
Throw in a number out there, but.
I was, yes.
Way back in on that.
I think it is reasonable. I'm trying to weigh everything here. So I'm not just trying to be the dissenter, but. What do we do about the Kahili?
Well, they have a back, they have room in the.
Even, I don't know. I don't know what the rates are of how long people stop and stay a while there even, but I'm just trying to. Push back from them.
And, and those are good things to bring up. With a he, Kahili cup, what I have found is there's some people who actually park in the dollar store parking lot. Which, um, they don't have a limit and we can't tell them they have to. But it might, that might help to, you know, and they do have a place in the back and that's what Shannon, people who are hanging out there. So I don't know, the bank, it's not really an issue. But I have seen people park in front of the bank and stay there, their car stay there all day. And that, I feel bad, you know, you can't even get. So. It's just something I thought that we might want to consider. But I don't want to create more of a hassle, or I don't want to do it just because we're trying to. Make changes. I want to do it because it's going to benefit the community. Right now, people are parking on some of the side streets in ways that are detrimental during the snow season. Because there's no paved place to park. And since we're getting ready to look at putting signs up, I thought we might as well look at all of the signage so we don't do, you know, do more.
So one, one little thought I just had too is we do have a sign over on the other side of the Family Dollar. Asking them not to park on the City Hall side of Family Dollar or the Family Dollar side of. Miller, hi ho, hi ho. There's nobody else that parks on those side streets other than the clinic. And then once a while CNN, but they're kind of like parallel parking and then the post office, of course. That's why we.
Along my building, which is not.
And it's not quite large enough, right? So, you know, maybe that's where your thirty minute or your fifteen minute spaces are. If you're going to do that. That would encourage the clinic to turn around and park behind the clinic, bring up some more spaces for their people. And then we do have like a ten minute sign right in front of the post office because Darlene had asked for that. Couple of years ago, so.
We do have that ten minute sign in front of the post office and I noticed that there are not very many people wait there. But I just thought if, if the majority of downtown was a two hour limit, then.
I like that. I like that. I'm on board with that.
Can't leave my car here all day. You know, or the people who live in the apartment buildings might go, you know, I gotta park behind because I don't want to get a ticket.
We have people from McCall, um, specifically, uh. Department of Land's lady, she turns around, she calls a couple of times a year, hey, can I park behind City Hall? This, we're gonna, you know, do a. Seven hundred mile trip up north or whatever. And this is where she's meeting her ride for a week.
Well, that's much nicer. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's much nicer than just parking on the side of the road. So, and I would like to put it even down by the park because I don't think people should be, I mean. If you're at the park for more than, you know, if they got, came and got a permit to have something down there, then obviously that would be different. But people who are there, you can eat your lunch and walk your dog, which you're not supposed to be, but. Um, or do whatever you're gonna do in the bathroom or whatever, within two hours, it seems to me. So. Is everybody good with that? We should try and, you know, if we're gonna have these signs anyway, they'd say no parking between two AM and six AM.
Strictly on Virginia Street. Is that what we're talking about? I'm good with that.
Okay, so are, is there, so we're all good with the two AM to six AM and that's going to be on a sign. You guys want that on all of those sections of Virginia Street or? I, I'm kind of with Mac, why don't we just do it all? Everybody good with that?
Let's do it all.
All right. And what about the private drive? Do we want to encourage the, the private drive owners to put those up or do we, as a city, want to help them? And put those up?
I know I'm gonna put mine up anyway.
He's gonna put his up anyway. I, I, I'm gonna go talk to Darcy tomorrow and see if they, cause she does have trouble with that. And see if maybe she would like to, um, do that. And put one up on hers that just say private parking lot. You know, and then put something on there about towing or whatever. And is everybody good with that? If we just ask those, okay. Okay, alrighty, well then.
So like October to. March.
No.
No, okay.
Year round. Yes, we're, we're year round. So just two AM to six AM.
Perfect.
Alrighty, so we don't have to have that other sign.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, anything else on the restrictions? And I, I know we're not going to go through this whole thing because I'm going to go meet with the. Fire, fire department EMS, and I want to come back to this because I want us to designate some areas. Where we're gonna have truck parking. And then say no truck parking in these areas. One of the areas I want to have no truck parking is right directly across from City Hall. In front of the library, it is impossible to see around that, around a truck that is sitting there. And you have two different roads coming in. And I've seen people almost get hit there so many times. And that, that area is just not a good area for a truck. So once we get this other truck. Parking area, then we need to put a sign that says no truck parking. And maybe something to direct them to where the truck parking is when they first come into town.
Maybe.
Go ahead, Darby.
I, I, I feel that a number of complaints about people part, trucks. Parking right in front of the old grocery store, because when people are trying to leave Brown's, they can't see to the right. So I don't know. I think that would be a good area.
Well, and yet. Only two hours, we're gonna clean this up a little bit, I think. Trucks pull off and they're there for a long time.
One other thing that we used to do and we haven't done in quite a while is actually paint tees. Where cross, where people can actually park so that you identify. Where those spaces are. And I think that would help a lot, like right in front of Darlene's shop a little bit, you know. Somebody had even suggested that maybe the first half space, uh, in front of the bulb outs is for motorcycle parking. Or a compact car, exactly. Something lower.
Okay, yeah, we can sure review that. So let me go to the EMS, let me talk to them about truck parking. And let's see what we can come up with and then we'll come back and revisit this. But let's move forward with, um, when we get to the action items, let's move forward with the. Virginia Street parking signage to include the two AM to six AM and the two hour limit, okay? All right. All right, so now we are at the act, auction items, action items, not auction. Action items. So the audit acceptance and that would be fiscal year. Isn't it twenty?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's nineteen twenty, yes.
Okay, so. Just got that. Um, so. Yeah, because it ended in nine thirty twenty.
Yeah.
Okay, so can I get a motion to, uh, accept the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit, please?
I will make a motion to accept the fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty audit.
I will second.
So, uh, Shiloh Riker.
Yes.
Derby Edwards.
Yes.
Darla Weber.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, and then the next item is what we were just talking about, Virginia Street parking signage to include, um. No parking between two AM and six AM and a limit of two hours. Of parking. Would like to make that motion?
I will make a motion to approve the Virginia Street parking signage, um. And Julie, I don't, I, the six hour thing and the two hour thing, I don't have it quite down, but, um, I would make a motion to approve that, please.
So, um, can I ask one question?
Yep.
So we're not wanting to change the ordinance just yet. Do, do we want to kind of do that two hour parking as a. Trial period and then maybe kind of clean that up?
Okay, that's the idea. We're gonna try the two hour parking is what my understanding from the council, you guys tell me if you're not right. And then we will. We have other changes to the parking ordinance. So we'll put that into the parking ordinance if we feel like it's going to work. Darby?
Um, yes, I would ask, like to ask Darla a question. You, you didn't have an understanding of what? The two hour and six hour, I didn't understand what you said.
Okay, so part of that parking derby is going to be the two AM to the six AM.
Correct.
And then we're gonna have the other parts, um, that we discussed.
Two hours or less.
Correct, yes. Thank you, Julie. Yes.
Okay.
Shiloh, I'm sorry, Shiloh.
Now I have a question. So if we're not making it an ordinance, are we just putting up the sign in hopes that people comply?
Yep.
Any sort of enforcement?
Yeah. We'll make an ordinance. If it looks like it might be making a difference, I think then we come back and go, you know what, let's actually make this an ordinance and we can give out, you know, have this. The sheriff's department keep a lookout, so.
Right.
I just, it might be a good reminder, so.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the table.
Yes, so Darla made the motion to, uh, purchase the signs for no parking two AM to six AM. And signs for limiting two hours. And I think Shiloh was just trying to second that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call of Shiloh Riker.
Yes.
Uh, Derby Edwards.
Yes.
And Darla Weber.
Yes.
Okay, and then broadband, thank you guys so much. Uh, broadband resolution declaring broadband as an essential utility service. We talked about this last. Meeting. Uh, this is part of kind of the kickoff. For us to start looking at maybe. Requiring broadband hookups be included when development happens and also being able to offer broadband to all of our. To all of our local residents. So there's a couple of typos in here.
And, and we will be putting many, much of this language into the comprehensive plan.
Right. So basically what we're saying is that every time in the comprehensive planet talked about city services. We're saying that we want to include city services. We want to include in city services broadband internet. Now, I think there's legislation that's coming up that's possibly going to help us in regard to this.
Yeah, and, and this was one of the things that Chris Curtin said that was like the first thing that.
The first step.
To do.
So, um, yeah, so there is a few like population goal instead of goad. There's just a few little.
Tired.
Things, I know. So, but the, the, um. Intent of this, did everybody understand what we're trying to say is that we feel like broadband is important enough? That it is a city service that we want to offer to people when they move into New Meadows. Everybody understand that? Okay. So.
Just need a motion.
Yeah, can we make a motion with, um. The, uh, fixing of any Scrivener errors, please?
Can I, can I make a motion to approve the broadband resolution?
Second.
With the Scrivener.
With the Scrivener corrections. They're just.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so do a quick roll call. Shiloh Riker.
Yes.
Derby Edwards.
Yes.
Darla Weber.
Yes.
All right, well. Thank you so much to Amy.
Yes, Amy Keener and John Keener.
Thank you for hanging on here with us until we got to your action item.
I've just unmuted you or asked you to unmute, so go ahead and unmute and we'll give you the floor, okay?
All right, we're here.
Saw your proposal. Everybody get a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Exciting stuff. We're very excited. What I'm gonna do is, um, do you have anything that you would like to say? And then I'm gonna let any of the city council members that want to ask you any questions.
Uh, no, we're just very excited for the opportunity. And, uh, we think it's very, very needed up in this area.
Yes, yes, yes.
We're looking at renting the space that was.
Uh, ABT's mechanic shop.
Okay, so everybody understands.
The center, center one.
Okay.
Um, yes, I'm Darby. Hey, what are your names?
I'm John, this is my wife, Amy.
Amy.
John and Amy, okay. I like to know, I like to know who I'm talking to, um. Can you just give me like a, a, I don't know, maybe a one or two sentence. Scenario as what it is to the service that you're gonna provide?
Oh, my God.
So we're gonna be providing mobile veterinary service. We have a thirty one foot truck. And it actually is, we're doing more than just house calls. We're actually have a surgery suite and exam room built into this truck and that, that's our idea. And we want to center out of New Meadows. All the way down as far south as Cambridge, all the way up into Donley and then all the way as far north as Whitebird.
All right. And what can we do for you? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
Eventually, we plan on building a brick and mortar clinic also.
Okay.
So we're gonna start out with this and then once we get going, that's, that's our ultimate plan.
Did everybody get a chance to read their wonderful proposal?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was, I just want to say, I thought it was very well written. I appreciated the, um. Demographics that you put in there and the research that you did to see exactly. What was needed in our area. That is so, so wonderful. Because then you're coming in with your eyes wide open. And I just want to say, it was, it was a joy to read. And I'm very excited for what you have planned. So Darby, have something else you wanted to ask him?
Do you folks live in, do you folks live in town or where do you live?
No, we live in, we live in Adams County, but we're about halfway between Riggins and New Meadows, right by Hazard Creek.
Okay, so up on like Smokey Boulder or somewhere in there?
Uh, we're right down, just right by the bridge that crosses where the Little Salmon and Hazard Creek meet.
Like fifteen minutes from New Meadows.
Yeah.
Very good. Okay. I just, I'd just like to get to know folks, um, you know what I mean? I mean.
I'm from Emmett. By the way, if that helps at all, I'm from Emmett. I grew up in Emmett. I know the area. This was my, where we live now was my family's cabin for a really long time. We just come up and spend the weekends here and. When I, we decided to move back down here, we decided to make it a permanent residence because I've always wanted to move back here, so. Here we are.
Mac has a question.
I have, I've, I've got a couple. So Amy and John, just, so do you own that home where you're at?
We do.
We do.
Okay. I'm just checking boxes. Um, and then the. Your brick and mortar that you hope to, I, I, I have not released any of that information and I would urge you not to, but. Um, you are looking at property where? And.
Uh, in the New Meadows area.
In the very close to New Meadows area, correct?
Very close.
Very, very, very close.
Do you have any questions?
Currently have any questions, but I was very thankful to see such a detailed and thoughtful business plan. It was refreshing to see all the thought that went into it.
Thank you.
Darla, do you have any questions for Amy and John?
Um, I do not have any questions, but I am super excited and thank you so much. Your business plan was amazing and very detailed, yes. And we need your services here. Um, and you are right up in that area where, um, my parents lived. So I'm very familiar with that. Um, I'm just, I'm, I, I'm just all over this. So, I'm very familiar with that. Um, I'm just, I'm, I, I'm just all over this, but I read that I'm going like, oh, my gosh, yes. You know, so, no, um, welcome. And I'm all good with it. Absolutely, yes. Super excited. I have two dogs, so. I'm all over you guys.
I gotcha.
Okay, um, so, do you have any questions for us as far as, uh, the, the rental or anything like that?
No, uh, Mac was, was, was very helpful in laying it out there exactly how it works, so I think we fully understand it and I think it's a great opportunity. We look really forward. I think it would work really well and we're excited to hopefully get started with it.
All right. Yeah, so, uh, everybody knows that we have this, uh, selection criteria resolution that we passed for the industrial park, which in some rent, uh, deductions or discounts based on some different things that, um, that they get their points off of it, so.
Right.
Um, so the base rent that we had set was.
So I put in the lease was 500.
And then with the discounts.
And that's the harder part. So this is a vital new service or business. It is identified, first of all, I'm going to look at the selection criteria. We already have the spaces available. There is a business plan and an application both completed. Um, you don't see the business application in your, um, packet because that's got a lot of social security numbers, that kind of stuff. Um, the business size is identified in our comprehensive plan and it appears to be harmonious with other businesses in the area and compatible with our zoning requirements. So I wanted to get that out of there in the notes, the minutes, okay? Um, so this, we have not had the appraisal yet. So, you know, I threw out $500, um, in their business plan. They have it listed at 350. So, you know, there's a little bit of stuff there. Um, it is a new vital service for business, so they automatically get 10 points. Um, is, are both of you owners or are, are you, one of you an employee?
Uh, well, we're both owners, yeah.
You're both.
But you plan, according to your plan, you plan to hire.
Yes.
Technician, is that correct?
That's correct. At least one within the first 12 months.
Okay, so we, there we go. We have another point for that one.
Okay.
Um, the maximum number of points allowed is up to 25. And so that would knock that down to, I think, 375. So, so what I would like to do is I would like the council, um, to give some direction here on what you want to do. Uh, we have not had an initial appraisal and I don't know how long it would take us to get that. Um, my concern is that those numbers aren't going to be skewed because most of what we're going to go off of is McCall. And I'll just tell you right now, I don't think that McCall is a good, a good.
Basis, yeah.
Basis for us to take when it comes to rentals of this sort. So, as you all know, the industrial park is for the purpose of helping people get businesses going in our community. And so I think we need to do whatever we can to, um, set this rental rate in such a manner as it helps them to get going. It does not, is not so low that we're basically keeping them from wanting to ever do anything different. But at the same time, I do think that we need to reward people who come into our community, live in our community, shop in our community, stay in our community. So I, I am open for some discussion on what the rent should be for this business. They budgeted 350, is that right? What do you think, Darby?
What did, excuse me, I'm sorry. What does it take to cover costs? Because the industrial park doesn't make money. Everything goes back into the industrial park. What does it cost?
We were writ, this, if we rented it to them for 350, we would be getting more than we were getting before.
Yeah.
And can I ask you? Does that seem like a reasonable rate?
Are you asking them?
Yes, I am.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Shiloh, wait, about 350?
There's.
Did you say?
Finished.
And Darby, go ahead.
So there's going to be some wear and tear on the facility that we will have to. Uh, you're not going to stay there forever. We agree on that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so there's going to be some wear and, wear and tear on the building that we also need to compensate for.
$300 would be more than we were getting before.
I beg your pardon, Julie?
$300 a month would be more than we were getting before when it was rented.
Okay, then yes, I think this is a fair amount. If you folks are accepting of that, um, just so we can cover that wear and tear that, you know, that's, and, and it just, I'm not saying you're going to trash the building. I don't think you're going to do that, but we've had some, uh, what do I want to say? Questionable occupants in the past. Okay, so we've, we've had to, we've had to back that up on, on. Well, like I said, we're not really making, we don't make money on the industrial park. Everything that's made goes right back into it. Um, and if you think that's a reasonable amount, then I'm on board with that.
So 350 is what you think is a good amount, Darby?
I think so.
Okay, Shiloh?
I feel like my views on commercial rent is way skewed because it's a McCall perspective. So the going rate is like a dollar a square foot minimum. So to me, I'm trying to get reasonable here mentally, but I think if we are trying to be a business incubator and we start off with 500 as the base rate and then using the point system, they get to go down to 375. I think that is really reasonable and hopefully helpful to a business that is trying to grow into something new. But I really would like us to try to get an estimate and an appraisal of what we should be charging in general. I know it's going to be skewed, but I think if we have a baseline for future work that we're doing, I think that will help our conversations be more educated.
Can I comment on that? Uh, Shiloh, do you think we should take into consideration rentals in this area? Because I, now being a landlord for a commercial property and knowing that there was no way I was ever going to get what McCall gets. If we could get an appraiser that actually would take current Meadows value, I would much rather do that than have them try to lump in the, sometimes amounts that are happening up in McCall. So I'm with you 100%, but I think we still have to, whatever that number is, we still have to look at what's happening here. You know, and I, I don't want to compete with, if they have an opportunity to rent somewhere else, you know, and we make it so low that they never would want to expand. That's my biggest concern. But, um, we have made a little bit of a, uh, we, we have used it as an incubator, you're right. So I'm, I'm right with you there, but I do think we're going to be really pretty inflated if McCall's the only thing they look at.
Yeah, it's hard, but maybe just an all-around Meadows value per square foot rate would be helpful for us.
Yeah, and may, maybe we can make it an average between even here, council and McCall, maybe something like that, so.
Right, right.
Okay, Darla, what are you thinking? Darla?
Oh, okay. So, and I agree with what, um, Shiloh has said, but I agree more strongly, Julie, with what you have stated. Um, you know, we need to be competitive because we are here and we're smaller. Um, and we want to bring these businesses in. That's our goal. We want to build, yes. So, um, but um, I don't know what our, you know, um, I don't remember what we say about when we can actually increase those, those rates. So, whatever we begin at, you know, we have the option based upon our plan that we can increase the rate, but we want these businesses in here and their business that they're offering us is huge. You know, I mean, um, so I, I agree with everything that's being said, um, but we need to have that ability and I know they're going to grow.
Right.
Because I know they're going to grow. And then they're going to establish yet another business, their own entity within the area, which again is going to improve the city of No Meadows. So we want to be encouraging and, um, helping them get that, that foothold that they need and that we want. So, that's my opinion.
So what if we do, what if we do the 375 and then we reevaluate, um, with a full-time wage and see how they've done? I mean, maybe they'll have to hire more people than they think and then.
Yes.
I, I think we should revisit this, this lease in a year.
Yes.
Lot time, look at not only the appraisal, but also look at where they are, um, as far as, you know, we can look at their, how many people they're reaching and a lot of other different things and um, I'm not saying that in a year your rate is going to go up. That's not what I'm saying. In reality, in a year, your rate could go down. Discounts. So I just, um, I, I would kind of, I kind of think 375 falls into line with our current resolution.
Yep.
Is everybody good with that?
I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
Are you guys, John and Amy, is that good for you?
Yes, yeah.
All right, I know it's a little bit more than what you had budgeted, but I think this gives us some room, a little bit of play also. And then come back and you have additional full-time employees or part-time employees or whatever, we can take that into consideration. So we'll write up the lease to be reviewed again, not necessarily to be increased, but to be reviewed in a year. And at that point, we will decide whether to, based upon our business is going, whether you want to do another year, whether you want to do longer. Is that good with you?
That's perfect for us, yeah.
All right, so do you want, we don't actually have the lease, but do you want?
There's, there's, we had, you have the lease there, it's just the.
I know, we just don't have the, so, I need a motion to approve the industrial park lease with Salmon River Mobile Vet LLC at $375 a month to be, with the rent to be reviewed in one year. So can I get someone to make that motion, please?
To make a motion? Go ahead, Darla, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Darby, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Salmon River Mobile Vet LLC industrial lease at a rate of 375 to be reviewed annually.
In one year.
In one year, that's annually, isn't it?
No, I just want it in one year and then everything changed. We, we may not do it annually after that, okay?
Okay.
One year.
I will second.
Thanks.
So, um, Darby Edwards moved to approve lease agreement for 375 a year with it being revisited in one year. Darla, second to the motion. Shiloh Riker?
Yes.
Uh, Darby Edwards?
Yes.
Darla Weber?
Yes.
Y'all should know this, this is like Brady Bunch.
Motion. Thank you so much and thank you, Amy and John. I, um, would love to meet you in person and
Yeah.
Something called Business Spotlight. So once you get going, we'll have you come in and into one of our city council meetings and give a presentation on what all you do, how to get ahold of you and all the information. So we look forward to, to hearing more about your business.
Yeah, cool. Thank you very much.
Thanks, you guys.
Awesome.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Shiloh, do you have, would you have any idea of, um, a good source for getting some sort of a, a good appraisal that would be? I mean, do you have any contacts in that regard?
I have a friend who's a really experienced Realtor who I can reach out to and see if she has recommendations, um.
Could you do that? I think that would be helpful.
Yes, when the new building got purchased for the school, she was a wealth of information for appraisers and inspectors and things like that, and they were all very specialized too, so she might know.
Well, I appreciate that we, if you would reach out to her. Thank you so much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes January 2021 payroll and time card, time card approval. The minutes of the city council meeting on January 25th and Delish Catering has an alcoholic beverage license that they have presented. Does anyone have any questions about any of those items? I gotta find my minutes, just a second. So, um.
I'll, I'll admit, I'll admit that I did not review the payroll and time cards.
Okay. I do.
Is there anything in there that stands out that I should take a look at?
No, I, I'm a little bit of a micromanage when it comes to payroll. You can ask everybody.
I know that you are. I know that you are. Okay.
But you are welcome if anybody has any questions or wants to wait to look at them or whatever. I do have something on the minutes and it's just a format change that I'd like Angie to do. And it's not something we have to wait to approve the minutes. Where it says present at city hall was, staff present were, and then present in city hall was. I'd like those to be, um, city cap, city council slash mayor present at city hall. And then staff, you did that one, but then I like public present on that third one. Because it sounds like there's three different presents.
Yeah.
So if you can just put public in front of public present at city hall was, okay? And I think that's a great way to do it because it lets you know who was there for what reason. But just formatting wise from now on, if we can do that, I think that would be really helpful. Did anybody else say anything in the minutes that we felt like needed to be changed or reviewed or considered?
Yeah.
All right, then I would, uh, I would like to hear a motion to approve the consent items.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Second?
Second.
No, seconded?
Uh, Shiloh Riker?
Yes.
Darby Edwards?
Yes.
Darla Weber?
Yes.
Perfect. And Darby, um, I just calculated our snowplow hours for the month of January and they were 63.61.
That doesn't, that number doesn't make any sense to me. 63 point, what?
One.
What does that mean?
That means we had 63.61 person hours in a plow.
So Darby.
Okay, and how does that equate to our, um?
So Darby, that first part of March, we will review the hours for snow removal and see where we're at.
Okay, okay.
So, okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, future meeting topics, uh, we're waiting on an agreement with the backup water and sewer operator. Let's see if we can't get that by the first part of March.
They were waiting for us.
He, he was going to put something together. And I would like that because remember he's going to help out Jesse while she's gone on vacation.
Okay.
Um, I will bring the animal control job description to the next meeting on the 22nd. Uh, we, I, I will be meeting with Mount Water Works next week to review the wellhouse well and the, actually the, let's call it the water project review.
Okay.
So we don't get in the weeds on that. Um, and then I will report back next meeting about this EMS partnership that we're working on. We need to put broadband back on. I think it's going to be staying on the agenda for a while because we keep having things change. And T-Tac can go back on the agenda, um, because I'll have either tell you we're having a meeting or that we had a meeting. What other things need to be on the agenda in the 22nd?
Um, hopefully, I'm hoping to have the personnel policy resolution ready, not just the resolution, but the whole manual. And impact wrench.
Yes. And I've been talking to Jesse about this and this is something that needs to be purchased by the city, but I wanted to get an actual cost. I don't want to just blanket, say yes, we're going to do that. Um.
So what's she looking for? Is she looking for, is it a hydraulic air operated?
I don't, she's going to give me the specs and I'm going to bring them to you.
Okay.
Um.
Okay.
Yep. The other thing that's going to be on the next meeting is we will rediscuss the illegal dumping. I have an idea of a pretty radical thing to do that I have to run my dick first, um, to get us some publicity and get somebody to help us, but it is radical. So I'll bring that up at the next meeting once Dick tells me that I'm not going to. So I'll bring that up at the next meeting once Dick tells me that I'm not gonna get in trouble. Okay, anything?
How are you?
What?
Mr. Stubbs, you haven't had an opportunity to speak. How are you doing this evening?
I'm doing great. Uh, thank you for asking.
Okay.
Dick knows he can, he can interrupt at any point in time, don't you, Dick? When you see us going astray. All right. Anything else?
Any, any agenda items will need to be to me by next Wednesday.
And this is, that is a deadline. I don't care if you're the mayor or who you are. It is a deadline. I want, I want to see an agenda out on Thursday. I don't wanna get it on Friday afternoon and then spend my weekend working on it. So I don't care who it is, if it's Mount Water Works, if it's me, whoever, it goes on the next meeting if we don't get it. If he doesn't get it by Wednesday, okay? So if you think of something early Thursday morning, I'm so sorry. But I was late last week, so I had to say that. All right, anything else? If not, then I would entertain one
I would like to make one more motion.
All righty.
I would, I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting of the New Meadow City Council.
I will second.
All right.
Six thirty-two. All in favor?
Yep.
Yeah.
Tell me that we have to end the meeting with a motion. Who, who is good with not having to end the meeting with a motion if we don't have to?
Otherwise, I'm gonna put action item on it.
I don't know how, but does it need to end with a motion? I don't know.
I'm in favor of
That's how we've always done it. I don't know if it's required or not. So Mac, you tell us.
You said it wasn't, so I think from now on, I'll just say meeting adjourned. Is everybody good with that?
Okay. All right, yep. Bye.
Shala, um, there's an email for you from
I am to reply with scheduling ideas.
Thank you. Thank you, all.